Okay, thank you councillors. I would like to today to begin by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land in which we are gathered and pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging. So, welcome to the 783rd Ordinary Council Meeting. I declare this meeting open at ten AM. I would like to advise meeting attendees this meeting is being webcasted and audio recorded. Now, I'd like to ask the gallery please to be upstanding if you're able to and join me in a moment of contemplation. This week marks a major milestone on our recovery from COVID-19. As the first round of vaccines become available to some of our most vulnerable community members, including aged care residents and frontline healthcare workers. It is the beginning of a national plan that will enable all Australians to have access to the COVID-19 vaccine by the end of 2021. It is truly remarkable moment for science and is certainly great news for businesses and residents in Logan. Our businesses will be able to operate with greater certainty and our residents will be able to fully embrace all that our wonderful city has to offer, including events such as the much-loved Eton Beach returning this Friday to the Logan River Parklands. So, as the vaccines begin to be delivered to Queenslanders, I want to express my heartfelt appreciation to the scientists who have worked tirelessly over the past year to reach this outcome. Thank you for your vision and your dedication. Many of us have prayed for this, many of us have wished for this and we have all held hope in our hearts that that day would come. To use a quote from Swiss philosopher Henri Frederic Amiel, 'Society lives by faith and develops by science.' Thank you councillors. Okay, leave of absences. We do have one leave of absence. So, I'd like to move that councillor Bannon be granted a leave of absence. I'll move that, can I have a second there? Councillor Bradley has seconded the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That has been carried unanimously, thank you. We're now going to condolences and we'll start off at division one and we'll work your way around. No, councillor Vane?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Not everyone is meant to have their name up on a billboard, to be celebrated on TV or to be put in a cheesy gossip magazine. Some people quietly go about their lives, yet their impact is like a ripple in water. It touches everything in its path. Robin Brooks of Kingston was one of those people, Mr Mayor. For his whole adult life, he loved his wife Julie and together they raised their two children, Greg and Deanne. They raised them to be good humans, to be strong and respectful community members. And they in turn have raised children with the same moral strength and fortitude. Yesterday, the Brooks family laid Rob to rest and celebrated a man whose simple actions of living a good life, loving his family and being a good community member impacted so many people in our local area and beyond. A father is neither an anchor to hold us back nor a sail to take us there, but a guiding light whose love shows us the way. Mr Mayor, can you please pass our condolences along to the Brooks family? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Vane. I do believe that councillor Kerensky has one or two.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Regrettably, I have two condolences to present today. I'd like the condolences be forwarded to the Anderson family. As many of you would have heard, there was a tragic accident on the Beane boat as it rode just this past weekend and a young lad by the name of Ashley lost his life in that accident. Many would remember Ashley as an avid baseball player. I know councillor Murphy's spoken to me about his contribution to the Beane Hawks as a catcher. But he was also a beloved student of the Windry Valley State High School and only graduated in 2020. Ashley had his whole world ahead of him. He was a bright young man, his future was bright and his passing has made a big impact, not only on his family, but his friends, his school and our whole community. Mr Mayor, I'd also ask that condolences be forwarded to the Grayden family. Peter Grayden was a bright spark from Yarra-Bilva. He was a vibrant personality and I had the pleasure of meeting him on several occasions. He passed away peacefully on Sunday the 14th of February and our thoughts are with his wife Lee and his family during this very difficult time.
Thank you councillor Kerensky. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm going to try to get through this without crying, okay? On Thursday night, Moya McKeon, OAM, passed away peacefully through a hard-fought battle of cancer. My thoughts are with her family and friends and loved ones. Those who knew Moya knew that she was a founding member of Quota Beane Lee and heavily involved in Quota Beane Lee and international community. For me, Moya was more than just that. She was a strong, independent woman who was well-being for her time. She was a trailblazer who paved the way for female leaders, not just in Beane Lee but beyond. She has been a mentor to me over the last past years and I'm internally grateful for her wisdom and guidance. In other words, she pushed my buttons and I'm sure she's done that to a lot of people. Moya spearheaded many worthwhile projects in our community in Beane Lee and the world, many of which continue to impact the lives of others today. She was recognised for her service to the community of Beane Lee, particular Quota International, with a Medal of Order of Australia in 2007 and received countless other awards throughout the years. I've been lucky to accomplish half of what Moya has done in her life. Our deepest conversations over the years were instrumental to my growth as a leader and as an individual. I'll never forget you, Moya. Mr Mayor, could you please pass on the condolences to the Moya's family?
Thank you councillor Murphy. Councillors, I have one myself. Just recently, we lost a division 10 resident in Luke Delgleish. Luke was a fighter. He was an environmentalist. He won one of our prestigious awards for environmental, for the environment and his passing will be missed by the environmental community. Luke fought the super quarry battle for about 10 years. He was emphatic that it was to be stopped. Unfortunately, it did get through, but the fight that took it up to the state Liberal Government was that they did put conditions in and I believe that it was the fight that allowed that to be obviously conditioned to a better outcome. Not the perfect outcome, but Luke was a fighter. He suffered from asbestosis and he knew what it was like to have bad lungs. And he was worried that the silrosis that you possibly get from the quarry, it was a big concern to him. And him and his wife Jean fought the battle for 10 years trying to stop it. Unfortunately, Luke passed away a week and a half ago and I attended his funeral and he'll be sadly missed by the community. Councillors, I now ask if you can stand and give one minute silence. Thank you councillors. We'll get on to the happy part. We had the sad part. We'll get on to the congratulations and I'll start division one. Councillor Bradley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like congratulations please be forwarded on to Chloe Wick for receiving the Regional Arts Development Fund and having her exhibition Natural Resilience: Inner Feelings, Outwards Reflections, held at Logan Art Gallery. Her collection is a reflection of 2020, the good and the bad and the celebration of the wonderful of everyday life as seen through the lens of someone with a disability. Chloe has undergone three neurosurgeries and throughout her long road to recovery, she has embodied resilience. Chloe's art is a depiction of her tenacity and spirit while paying homage to those people and landscapes she admires. Well done and congratulations to Chloe. I'd also like congratulations be forwarded on to the Changtin Buddhist Temple for their Chinese New Year, which Mr Mayor you attended. I'd like congratulations to the 100, sorry, beg pardon, 1,500 volunteers from the Buddhas Light Association who helped host and launch an amazing Chinese New Year event. And councillors, I strongly encourage you to attend. Normally, we'd have the deputy mayor and a number of other councillors, chairpersons of tourism etcetera going along to this wonderful event. This is an annual event and I was so proud that they were able to organise it this year despite the devastating circumstances caused by COVID-19. The Changtin Buddhist Temple is an amazing asset and tourist attractor for our city. We had a number of councillors from Brisbane City Council there as other tiers of government as well. Could, congratulations please, this has actually come from the community, please be forwarded on to the entire Logan North Aquatic Centre staff members. The staff and the gym is excellent and everyone there is welcoming and helpful. Also, could congratulations be, and thank you, be sent to the front of house Stephanie and Garrett for working so hard throughout COVID with taking temperatures and advising, sorry, and adhering to COVID-safe plans. They remained positive throughout and that's come from the community. So, congratulations, please be forwarded. Congratulations also be forwarded on to Anita Anderson for receiving the Citizen of the Year award. It was well-deserved award in recognition for her inspirational work with her charity, Touch of Hope. I actually met her whilst door-knocking, as you do when you're electioneering, so I heard all about this wonderful charity. Anita is the co-founder of the charity Touch of Hope, which supports hundreds of local residents each year through outreach sessions which aim to relieve poverty, provide food, essential groceries and to clothing of those in need. So, well done to Anita, thank you.
Thank you councillor Bradley, councillor Vane?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like, if you could pass congratulations along to a local who galloped out onto the field on Saturday night up in Townsville. Talisha Harden led the Indigenous All Stars Women and Talisha lives in Woodridge. They went down to the Maoris, as you do sometimes when you've got big brutal girls playing against you, but they actually gave it a cracking shot. One of the biggest things is a lot of those Kiwi players actually come from Logan as well. They're not as well-known and they're not as celebrated. So, if you could write a letter both to the NRL Indigenous All Stars team, Mr Mayor, as well as the New Zealand Maori women's team, that would be absolutely fantastic.
Thank you. Councillor Rave?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And my microphone is not working, blinking.
Yeah, I'll do as well.
There we go, it's all good, we figured it out. Councillor Lane still had a microphone going, bear with us. New digs back in the old digs, it's good to be here again. Mr Mayor, I'd like to ask that congratulations be forwarded to Nick Patty and the Southside Connect crew. For those of you who don't know who Nick is, you can see his great work in my hairdo today. He's a barber who owns specific cuts barber shop in Slacks Creek and councillor Russell's electorate. And on Monday this week, something pretty amazing happened. Nick put out a call to the community to call for men to come together and discuss a scourge that haunts our community and that's domestic violence. This is often a very confronting topic for men to discuss because they can either be victims as children, they can be abusers as adults and they can also find themselves occasionally as victims as adults as well. What we saw that evening was people coming together, being vulnerable, sharing their experiences and trying to understand where domestic violence starts. Because the key message was not that domestic violence starts when someone punches somebody else or somebody intimidates somebody else. It starts so much further back in a place of fear, control and power and how those things can really damage our relationships. I was quite moved to see so many men who had never met me or anyone else there before sharing openly, sharing stories that they probably wouldn't have told their best mates. And maybe the kindness of strangers is what made it such an effective event. Nick wants to keep running these through the year, Mr Mayor, and with over 150 men attending this one, I can only imagine they're going to get bigger. So, I'd encourage my colleagues, if they do hear of them in their electorates, to support it, come along and see the amazing work that he's doing, purely because he sees a need in the community, both for young men, old men, men from all sorts of different cultures, backgrounds and religions to come together and to stand up and say that we don't want to see any more domestic violence anywhere on anyone.
Councillor Hall, have you got any congratulations?
Not at this time, Mr Mayor.
Okay, next on my list I had councillor Harema.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I rise today to pass our city's congratulations on to the new student leaders at Regent's Park State School. I had the pleasure of meeting these leaders at the inaugural ceremony a short time ago. I was blown away by the intellect, the leadership and the grace shown by these young boys and girls. They understand that leadership isn't about leading a team. It's about making sure that everyone on that team feels confident in themselves and feels confident in getting the job done. These kids knew that leadership is about lifting up others. They're passionate, they're smart and they're humble. It's a great sign for our city and it's a great sign for our nation that we have young leaders like this. I'd like to pass our city's congratulations on to the students, the families, the teachers, principal Julie Strong and deputy principal Norman Gill for their great work in this important area. Thank you, Mr Mayor, I yield my time.
Thank you councillor Harema. Councillor Wilcox?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I do have a couple of congratulations today, so please bear with me, I have three. On the 12th of February, Logan City Council held an event to present six bursary awards to local Logan residents. Each student was awarded a tertiary educational bursary worth $5,000 to help offset the cost of textbooks, travel, stationary and other educational expenses that you incur when you're at university or TAFE. Division 11 was lucky enough to have two of these recipients. So, I'm rather proud and would like to pass on my congratulations to Amelia from Green Bank, who is studying, and bear with me, I hope I don't say this wrong. She's studying a Bachelor of Echo Cardiography and Cardiac Physiology via CQU and Annie from Green Bank, who is studying a Bachelor of Nursing. I know that these funds will be a huge relief for all of those students awarded and if you're a university student or a TAFE student, tertiary student, please make sure that you apply for the bursary in the next round. They are quite an award to get and much-needed funds. I'd also like to pass on my congratulations to Leo and Jill Grayson. They're both Munrooban residents and every couple of months they fundraise for a different community group in Logan and the wider community. They have previously fundraised for the homeless, the drought appeal, bushfire, cancer research, mental health and this month they raised funds for the Heart Foundation to coincide with Valentine's Day and a recent article that was published and written about Logan being heart attack city. Leo and Jill wanted to raise the awareness of good heart health and in the process has had a couple of articles published in Parkbridge News and held a morning tea. If you would like to donate to the Heart Foundation via Leo, please check on my Facebook page for his details or contact me. So far, they have raised $800 this month, so I'd like to say well done and thank you to Leo and Jill and to those who attended the morning tea and the community members who donated so far and so far that everyone has completed Leo's quiz that happens in the Parkbridge News. I would also like to wish a very happy 10th birthday and hitting double digits to one of my neighbours, Miss Emily. She celebrated in style with her parents and her older brothers and her family on the weekend and it looked like a fantastic weekend, so I hope you had a great birthday and welcome to double digits. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wilcox. Please now, congratulations. Now going to confirmation, councillor Rave? Councillor Murphy? Did you have to introduce yourself? Oh, you did, okay. I'm sorry. Councillor Murphy? Are you right? Okay. All right, so we've got confirmation of the minutes of the 782nd Ordinary Council Meeting. So, I now refer to the minutes of the previous Ordinary Council Meeting. I move that the minutes of the 787th Ordinary Council Meeting held on the 29th of January 2021 be confirmed, is there a second for the motion? Councillor Stemp has seconded the motion, does anyone wish to speak to the motion? None wishes to speak, I now open the floor to vote. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That has been carried except for councillor Bradley? Okay. So, everyone supported that motion except for councillor Bradley. Business arising for minutes, we have no business arising minutes to consider, so we'll go straight into the committee recommendations. I now refer to the City Planning Economic Development Environment Committee meeting held on the 16th of February 2021. Councillor Rave and chairperson of City Planning Economic Development Environment Committee, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before we move into discussion, do any councillors have any new conflicts of interest they'd like to declare? There being none, I'll now speak to the recommendations. Mr Mayor, the item I'd like to speak to today, it's a confidential item, but I can speak to it without revealing any of the nitty-gritty detail that we have to keep quiet and it's in relation to the purchase of new environmental properties for rehabilitation. So, the environment Logan just keeps on winning. Last month, we purchased 212 hectares of pristine conservation land, the number one priority for conservation land in our city. And this month, we've moved straight into rehabilitation land. So, this is land that can be used when we have developers clearing trees. They pay us offsets and we go forward and we replant those new trees in properties in locations around the city where we want to preserve or restore the environment. 5,000 new trees can be planted on these properties, which is a fantastic outcome for the city and continues to build on the great work that we've been doing this year, having already planted more than 5% new green canopy in the city. That's including the trees that we've lost. So, we're ahead of not only population growth at 2%, Mr Mayor, but we're ahead of the number of trees that are being cut down when we see developments either for residential or industrial purposes. I have nothing else I'd like to speak to on this matter, Mr Mayor, so if you'd like to open the floor to my colleagues, that would be fantastic.
Thank you councillor Rave, any other councillors wish to speak? No, well, I'd just like to add on top of what councillor Rave has just said. I am proud of our green credentials with this city. We are going in the right direction. I'm sick and tired of seeing negative stuff on the internet. Unfortunately, with social media, it allows a local idiot to have a platform. We are doing some great stuff in the city and I'm proud to be involved with it. Thank you councillor Rave.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. If you can figure out a way to get negative stuff off the internet, you and I were going into business. We don't need to do this public representation thing anymore. I'd also like to add that this year, we've seen, since 2016 I should say, we've seen a massive growth in canopy across the city. So, we've gone from tree canopy across the city being 41%, now we're up to 53%. So, that really shows you that it's not just something we've done this year, it's not just a flash in the pan. We've been building those green credentials for a long time, Mr Mayor, and I know how important that is to you. I now like to move that the recommendations of the City Planning Economic Development and Environment Committee meeting held on the 16th of February be adopted.
Thank you councillor Rave, I have a second to the motion. Councillor Hall, second to the motion and output the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That has been carried unanimously.
May I have my name recorded against 4.1, thank you.
And councillor Kerensky?
Mr Mayor, I'd like my name recorded against item 4.1, please.
Thank you, and councillor Murphy?
The same, please, Mr Mayor, against 4.1.
And councillor Wilcox?
I originally abstained from 4.1 as well, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, the marathon has been carried. I'll now move over to the City Infrastructure Committee, which was held on the 16th of February 2021. Councillor Vane, chairperson of the City Infrastructure Committee, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before we move into discussion, do any councillors have any new conflicts of interest to declare on any items? Please advise the item number only at this stage. There being none, I'll now call for a discussion on the recommendations.
Sorry, we wish to speak to the recommendation, not wishing to speak to the recommendation, sorry, I didn't hear. Okay, thank you councillor Vane, do any other councillors wish to speak to any of the motions? No? Okay, there being no speakers, councillor Vane, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I now move that the recommendations of the City Infrastructure Committee meeting held on 16th of February 2021 be adopted.
Thank you councillor Vane. Councillor Vane has moved the motion, do I have a second there? Councillor Stemp has seconded the motion, I now put the matter to the floor to vote. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That has been carried unanimously, therefore the motion has been carried. Any councillors wish to record any name? Sorry. Any councillors wish to record their name against any of the motions? No, thank you. Okay, now we'll move to city lifestyle. I now refer to the City Lifestyle Committee meeting held on the 17th of February 2021. Councillor Kerensky, chairperson of the City Lifestyle Committee, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before we move into discussion, do any councillors have any new conflicts of interest they wish to declare? There being none, I'll now speak to the recommendations. At the City Lifestyle Committee last week, councillors were presented with just the one report, which was an update and background information on the community space at the recently upgraded Underwood Park multi-sport facility. This report has resulted in a positive outcome for the community and for their user groups. In general business, our councillor cohort discussed the parking challenges faced by families in areas around school drop-off times and of course, pick-up times. The passion for the community's safety and wellbeing was evident amongst my fellow councillors and we're continuing to work collaboratively with QPS, Queensland Police Service and council officers in this space. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Any councillors wish to speak? Councillor Bradley, wish to speak? Sorry. Hang on, I didn't use the microphone, I've been naughty. So, any other councillors wish to speak? Councillor Bradley wishes to speak, councillor Bradley, thank you. So any other councillors wish to speak? Councillor Bradley wishes to speak. Councillor Bradley, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I wish to speak to item 4.1. The cooking facility is at Underwood Park Community Hall. On reflection, I wish to vote against this item. There are a couple of reasons I wish this to be noted. Firstly, I have been involved in this whole process except during administration. Some of the comments and statements made in the report are not reflective of what happened prior to administration. Secondly, since I have returned as a councillor this term, I've had to ask for a number of reports to rectify works which have occurred with this project. Notably, the erosion of the steep slope and the one metre foot path, both of which have now been fixed. Thirdly, I am still having meetings with groups about this project. Late last year, one such group came to my mobile office saying they had issues and were meeting with staff. So normally as a councillor, you'd allow that to be dealt with and hopefully resolved. I informed them to progress with the staff and if they had continued to have issues, that I was happy to meet with them in the new year. This very afternoon, I am meeting with this group, who obviously still have ongoing issues. Finally, I wish it noted that I'm pleased the manager has found $5,000 in the budget to put an oven and stove in what was mentioned in the plans and described as a kitchen. And it's a shame that this resolution couldn't have been reached prior to this report and prior to two meetings I had with council officers. Whilst there are two commercial kitchens in the whole building there and the Rochdale Rovers football club rooms and for the Meals on Wheels, I do feel it's inappropriate to assume that sporting clubs would cater for events when they have put it in writing previously, they do not wish this to occur. Nor is this their core reason for existence in the community. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bradley. Any other councillors wish to talk? None being so, I hand it back to councillor Kerensky.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I now move that the recommendations of the City Lifestyle Committee held on the 17th of February 2021 be adopted.
Thank you councillor Kerensky. Councillor Kerensky has moved the motion. Can I have a second of the motion, please? Councillor Russell has seconded the motion. I put the matter for the floor to vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Everyone has voted except for councillor Bradley. The motion has been carried. Councillor Bradley, do you want to record? Okay, thank you councillor Bradley. Okay, we'll now move to city governance. I now refer to the City Governance Committee meeting held on the 17th of February 2021. Councillor Wilcox, chairperson of City Governance, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I note that declarable conflicts of interest were declared by councillors Bradley and Kerensky on item 5.1 in the committee meeting. The eligible councillors voted that the councillors could participate in a decision about the matter at the meeting, including by voting on the matter. A conflict of interest was also declared on behalf of councillor Raven. However, eligible councillors voted that he did not have a conflict of interest. These decisions will apply to all subsequent decisions in respect of the matter. Therefore, they do not need to re-declare today unless there is a change to the councillor's personal interests and/or the nature of the matter being discussed. However, Mayor Power declared a conflict of interest and voluntarily left the meeting, including while the matter was discussed and voted on. Therefore, I will be separating item 5.1 from the bulk of our discussions today. Before we move into discussion, do any councillors believe that there has been a change to your personal interests and wish to re-declare your conflict? Or do any councillors have a new conflict of interest to declare at this stage? Please only advise of the item number at this stage.
There has been some slight change, so I'll hand it over to the director of organisational services, please.
Through the chair. Good morning councillors. There have been some minor grammatical changes to the declarations made at the City Governance Committee. The councillor Kerensky, councillor Bradley and Mayor Power made the same declaration with regard to agenda item 5.1. As the changes are very minor and grammatical in nature and that don't change the intention of the declaration, the changes can be made administratively and those declarations don't need to be reconsidered today.
Thank you, Director. I'll hand it back to you, councillor Wilcox.
I will now speak to the recommendations excluding item 5.1.
Thank you councillor Wilcox. You wish to speak? You're not speaking to it?
No.
Okay. Any other councillors wish to speak to any other item other than 5.1? No? Okay. That being no, I'll now hand it back to councillor Wilcox. You may proceed.
Thank you. Firstly, I would just like to thank my fellow councillors and to those who were in the audience and were watching the city governance meeting online last week. It was an extremely long meeting with the new legislation and it made it difficult to manoeuvre in and out of confidential having four councillors declaring similar conflicts of interest on the same agenda item. But firstly, I would like to say thank you to Kay Sullivan and her team for answering my questions during committee last week. They did have to take them on notice but responded in a couple of days, so thank you. I also just wanted to let the community know that although I may not speak much to the recommendations that come through the City Governance Committee, it's because I'm finding that I'm getting my answers and responses to questions asked. The leadership and guidance that councillor Murphy and I are receiving from the city governance stream, who is led by Mr Robert Strachan, director of organisational services but is currently the acting CEO, has been tremendous. But to all of the managers and staff who have made both councillor Murphy and I feel confident and able to hit the ground running with the budget discussions and everything else to do with governance, we would like to say heartfelt thank you.
Thank you councillor Wilcox. So councillor Wilcox, you've moved the motion. I'll now call for a second of the motion. Councillor Murphy has seconded the motion. Is there any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
Point of order, Mr Mayor. Councillor Wilcox didn't actually move the motion.
Yeah, I just realised. Apologies. So thank you, Mr Mayor. I now move that the recommendations of the City Governance Committee meeting held on the 17th of February 2021, with the exception of item 5.1, be adopted.
Thank you councillor Wilcox. I noticed that councillor Wilcox has now moved the motion, so I'm asking for a second. Councillor Murphy has seconded the motion this time. So as a result of that, I now ask for those, anyone wish to speak to the motion? No one wishes to speak to the motion. I now put the motion to the floor to vote. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That has been carried unanimously, therefore the motion has been carried.
Excuse me, Mr Mayor. Can I have my name against 6.1, please?
Any other councillors? Okay. So we're up to item 5.1. Thank you councillor Wilcox. I now refer to item 5.1 of the City Governance Committee meeting held on the 17th of February 2021. I have a declarable conflict of interest on this item. The particulars of my declaration are as follows. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is this. The party identified in the confidential report. The declarable conflict of interest arises because of my relationship with a related party as follows. In the background papers for the report, the contact for the exemption claim in the administrator of the Facebook page, which has carried an active and deeply personal smear campaign against me and some of my colleagues from a previous term. I propose to voluntarily exclude myself from the meeting while this matter is debated and the vote is taken. Therefore, I now call on the deputy mayor, councillor Raven, to preside over the meeting on this item while I leave the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Power. Councillor Wilcox, chairperson of the City Governance Committee, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. I now refer to item 5.1. And before we move into discussion, do any councillors have any new conflicts of interest to declare? There being none, I will now speak to the recommendation.
Would anyone else like to speak to the recommendation, councillors? There being none, councillor Wilcox, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. I now move that the recommendation for item 5.1 of the City Governance Committee meeting held on 17th of February 2021 be adopted.
Councillor Wilcox has moved the motion. Is there a second to the motion? Thank you councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy has seconded the motion. Does anyone else wish to speak further to this motion? There being none, I now open the floor to vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That has been carried unanimously. The motion has been carried. As item 5.1 has now concluded, I request that Mayor Power please be invited back into the meeting and resume the chair, despite me not being able to use the gavel. Does anyone want to be disorderedly?
Okay, councillors. So we now have the council reports, amended terms of reference for the City Planning Economic Development and Environment Committee. We have one council report to consider. I now refer to item 10.1. I invite Ms Kay Sullivan, the acting director of organisational services, to join the discussions before we open discussions on this matter. Do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? Being none, I now refer to the acting director of organisational service to open a public discussion. Ms Sullivan, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Good morning councillors. I refer to report 10.1, which is the amended terms of reference for the City Planning Economic Development and Environment Committee. I'll take the report as read, but note the following points. The purpose of this report is to seek an amendment to the terms of reference for the City Planning Economic Development and Environment Committee and remove councillor Karen Murphy as an appointed deputy chairperson. In accordance with section 3.2 of the Local City Council Local Government and Committee Meeting Code, the local government is required to appoint a chairperson and deputy chairperson for each committee. And I note that councillor Murphy was recently appointed as the deputy chair for the City Governance Committee. Therefore, it is recommended that in accordance with section 267 of the local government regulation, the membership of the City Planning Economic Development and Environment Committee be amended and the amended terms of reference for the City Planning Economic Development and Environment Committee attached to this report be adopted. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, acting director. I now open the floor to the councillors for discussion. Councillor Raven, you wish to rise?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to briefly thank councillor Murphy for her good work as a deputy. It's been a pleasure to work with you and your enthusiasm and your insight both into economic development, planning and the environment has been extremely valuable. The chair for governance is very lucky to have you as their wing lady and I'm sure you both do amazing work in there. I would like to note, Mr Mayor, that it's not just you and I that struggle with the name of my committee. Ms Sullivan also struggled with how long it is, so we're still looking for a faster, shorter way to talk about the City Planning Economic Development and Environment Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Raven. Any other councillors wish to speak? Not being sunned, I'm now looking for a mover for the motion. Councillor Raven has moved. Can I have a second? Councillor Bradley has seconded the motion. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? No one wishes to speak to the motion. I now put the motion to the floor to vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That has been carried unanimously, therefore the motion has been carried. Thank you councillors. Thank you acting director. Deputy director. Okay, late reports. We have no late reports to consider. Petitions. I believe we do have a petition. So councillor Hall will be presenting the petition. So councillor Hall, if you would like to now discuss that petition.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I'd like to present a 63 signature petition that I have received. I'd like to give a little bit of context and background for the benefit of the viewers watching at home and to the council. Last year, I received a complaint about a walking path that apparently had become overgrown in Grove Road Reserve. I investigated this walking path and I found that it actually wasn't a walking path. It was a path that had somehow come about through people walking through a large grassy area, which was a watercourse. I made several investigations through council as to whether this had ever previously been a walking path with Logan City Council and apparently it had not. I had furthermore investigated with some of the residents about this path and apparently the major complaint was it was always wet and muddy and sloshy and they felt that council hadn't been maintaining it properly because you'd always be walking through mud whenever you'd walk over it. With investigation, I actually found that it was actually going through a wetland watercourse and it was located directly next to a large drain in the Grove Road Reserve. I let the resident know, look, this grass is actually, tall grass and area is actually significant, so we can't cover it. We need to leave it as it is. She asked if I could investigate putting a large bridge over it, which I did. I decided to investigate it through council. Council officers showed me the cost of this bridge going over the large grass and I thought, well, what else could I do with this Grove Road Reserve at the same cost of this bridge? So I made some inquiries to the residents who often visit the dog park section of Grove Road Reserve and asked them what they would like in this park in particular. The main things that people brought up were a shelter area for people to stay, more drinking fountains, better pathways in the leading into the section. And one very important one was a small dog section, so people with small dogs could be in a separate area from people with large dogs. So I agreed with all these, so I started heading towards the design work is to actually put these together because I believe these things will benefit everyone in the community. Furthermore, while I was down there, a resident named Peter said, look, I have a dog that goes to this park and he often likes to dive into the tall grass and the mud and then I have to take a muddy dog home and I'm a bit worried about, you know, him disrupting the environment and what he might find. So I said to him, look, many people like the aesthetic of this area and not having fencing there, but if you can get some support from your community towards what you would like, then, you know, I'll look at it and I'll have a read and see what you've found. He gathered a petition of 63 signatures, all saying that they would like to separate that environmental habitat area from the rest of the dog park with the fence. That way, we're not disrupting the environment and, you know, the dogs can run around safely. Now, I personally believe it's very important that we protect our watercourses and I know I've upset a couple of residents because I didn't put a path through there and I'm not looking at putting a bridge there. But at the end of the day, you know, I have to look at the environment and our impact on the environment. Our first Australians lived for thousands of years in harmony with the environment. They understand the importance of protecting our waterways and our watercourses and we need to understand that too. I've done some investigation and that area is a habitat for frogs, yes, and also snakes. We have 28 different species of frogs in Logan. 12 species are considered significant to Logan. Two are on a vulnerable status and endangered, so we have to do whatever we can to protect our watercourses and make sure we have the best chance possible for them to survive. So anything that I'm going to do with this park, I would like to make sure that that area is protected and we preserve their environment. I'm going to read out the petition. Sorry, you've got an environmental rant as usual. We, the undersigned, hereby respectfully request the following from Logan City Council. The petition is wished to bring to your attention the lack of fencing surrounding Grove Road Dog Park, it's actually Grove Road Reserve, and the dangers and risks of incomplete fencing. Due to these risks, we request your erect fencing completely surrounding the park. The Grove Road Dog Park is wonderful place for dogs and people of the area to come together daily. A fantastic community of locals has developed, brought together by their love of their dogs and seeing them play together and enjoy good runaround. We recently created a Facebook group page for their regular attendees to keep in contact and community dog toys to create for dogs and owners to use at the park. and community dog toys to create for dogs and owners to use at the park. The initiatives of the local councils to create the park is viewed as a great success, and more people and dogs join this local community every week. The park is a beautiful place bordering the Grove Road Reserve, unfortunately is only fencing surrounding half the park, and the other half is condoned off by long grass or scrub in some sections, significant cliff drops into the wetlands of the Grove Road Reserve. Every day at the park, as the dogs run around excitedly, enjoy themselves, they run into the long grass and swamp, they become filthy and playing in the disgusting water and mud, and drink the stagnant muddy water. While they are in the swamp area, they are exposing themselves to the risk of snakes, have been spotted, ticks and other dangerous animals, bacteria and diseases, putting the health at risk. Additionally, owners put themselves at risk to the dangers by entering the reserve area to retrieve their dogs. As well as the aforementioned danger to the dogs and the owners, there is also a risk of the natural environment of the reserve, the plants and the animals that call their home, the dogs entering the space and disrupting and damaging the natural ecosystem, something we believe should be avoided. We believe the dog park and reserve can coexist in the same space, however, the lack of physical boundary between the two create unnecessary dangers and risks to both the dogs and nature. Therefore, the petitioners request Logan City Council, complete the fencing surrounding the Grove Road Dog Park. I'd like to say that I support the petition, and I'm actually allocating my own lip funding towards updating the Grove Road Reserve, because I think this is a benefit for the whole community and Logan.
Thank you, Councillor Hall, I won't curb your enthusiasm, but you did go over. So we do have a motion up on the screen, I'll read it, that the petition in relation to Grove Road Reserve Dog Park, as attached to the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 24th of February 2021 be received and referred to the Director of Community Services for a further investigation and a preparation of a report to a future City Lifestyle Committing Meeting if required. So councillor Hall, you will move that recommendation? We're looking for a second, councillor Keransky has seconded the motion. Any councillors wish to speak to the motion? No one wishes to speak, I'll put the matter to the floor to vote, all those in favour, please raise your hand. That has been carried unanimously, therefore the motion has been carried. Okay, is there any other petitions? No other petitions, thank you. Consideration of notified motions, we have no notified motions to consider. Now going to general business, and last time I believe we finished with councillor Bannon, so it'll be councillor Stemp's turn, thank you councillor Stemp.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to discuss the major concerns raised by my community regarding the development of the South Redland Bay wastewater treatment plant by land lease on the Logan River as part of the shoreline housing development. The proposed location for the treatment plant is in Redland City, however, it borders the Division 10 suburb of Carbrook. The plant is designed to ultimately discharge via Serpentine Creek, which forms the natural border of Logan and Redlands. This creek is part of the same flood area as the native Dog Road Conservation Area and Serpentine Creek Conservation Area, directly opposite the treatment plant, and the site is also located close to prawn farms on the Logan River. It should be noted that this is not the only option available to the developer for wastewater treatment, and that Logan City Council has no direct influence or decision-making powers with regard to this project. In December 2020, in support of my community, I wrote to the Honourable Dr Stephen Miles, Deputy Premier and Minister for State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning, and the Honourable Megan Scanlon, Minister for the Environment and Great Barrier Reef, to voice concerns raised by Logan residents with regard to this development. These concerns included: the flood and storm tide overlays clearly outline significant flooding into Serpentine Creek; the effects of discharge, both controlled and uncontrolled, with regards to protection for flora and fauna within the conservation areas and obligations under the Nature Conservation Act 1992; potential adverse effects on local properties during peak summer floods and high tides after civil earthworks on the proposed site; discharge water quality and by accumulation of hormones and pharmaceuticals with respect to local prawn, fish and livestock industries; noise abatement and odour controls for our Logan residents; the impact of increased traffic from the shoreline development and how be managed intersections out to the M1; mosquito controls for the proposed mangrove plantings along the creek and river line; and the impact the location the treatment plant will have on property values. I received a response from the Honourable Dr Stephen Miles, where I was assured that the assessment undertaken must consider matters such as those raised in my letter, but I was also strongly encouraged to voice concerns as part of the ministerial infrastructure designation assessment period, which closes on the 5th of March 2021. Therefore, as this development has clear implications for our Logan residents and the local environment, I will continue to advocate in consultation with the mayor to the state government for the consideration of all available treatment options and sites, as well as an expectation to preserve existing environmental values in the area and mitigate any amenity impacts on existing Logan residents. I would now like to take this opportunity to formally table the letters I've sent and move the motion you will see on the screen.
Thank you councillor Stemp, I believe we've got a recommendation up on the board. I'm also aware that councillor Stemp is moving a procedural motion, therefore there's no requirement for a second. Anyone wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Bradley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I believe you would probably be in agreement with me, this whole development is of great concern for our waterways and for our Moreton Bay particularly, so yeah, I'm very much in support of this, thank you.
Thank you councillor Bradley, any others? No. Therefore, I'll put the matter to the floor to vote, all those in favour, please raise your hands. That has been carried unanimously, therefore it's been carried. Is that all your GB? Okay, thank you councillor Wilcox, GB?
Not today, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Murphy?
Not today, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Bradley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I wasn't going to, but I will just note that we're in the chamber for the first time this term, which is a great achievement for us and for the city, I suppose, but I wish to note, our lovely plush chairs, we need to thank the administrator for those, so they're very comfortable, thank you.
I think the previous chairs lasted 30 years, I know I sat in them for about 24, and I know they're well and truly here before I was. Councillor Lane?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, every time you mention your length of service, we all have a drink. Division 2 Local Infrastructure Funds are limited, and there's a lot of need out there in the community now. Funding permanent structures takes years to save up and do, and given that we're responsible councillors, we look at other options that are available to us. I raised the idea of leasing toilets and change rooms for our local clubs in need. What this has meant is that three clubs in my community will have their facilities for this year's season, and that's a great outcome. I'm standing up today to give a shout out to the City Lifestyle team of Nigel, Frances and Judy, who are working hard to help me deliver these change rooms and toilets for the sporting clubs, including Logan Roos Football Club at Oates Park, Logan Metro FC at Compton Park, and Logan City Cricket Club at Gould Adams Park. When I was elected, Mr Mayor, I promised to deliver dignity back into the community, and together with these enthusiastic council officers, we're doing that one amenities block at a time, so thank you to them.
Thank you councillor Lane, councillor Russell?
Not today, thank you.
Councillor Keransky?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, today I rise to speak on an urgent need, and that need is to upgrade the intersection of Bannockburn Road, Boliva Road and the Bodasit Beanley Road to include traffic signals. I have on several occasions raised my concerns that this is in fact a dangerous intersection, and that we need to focus on advocating for bringing forward of the traffic lights. As recently as the 27th of January, I received an email from a concerned Bannockburn resident requesting lights be installed at the intersection. In her letter, she highlighted her concerns for the increased traffic flow due to a Woolworth that's scheduled to open in the next couple of months. She also spoke of incidents and accidents that she'd witnessed personally, and she was very concerned that something dreadful would happen in the not-too-distant future if something wasn't done. I shared the resident's concerns with council officers, and as anticipated, I was advised by council's traffic engineers that as this is a state road, the intersection therefore falls under the jurisdiction of the Department of Transport and Main Roads. I dutifully wrote to the state member requesting her investigation and her action. But sadly, within less than a month of this most recent correspondence, a local 17-year-old boy lost his life near this intersection. Seven others were injured in the two-vehicle collision, and a Bannockburn resident that I know well posted on her horror at being one of the first on the scene. Mr Mayor, our residents have been telling us this section of road is notoriously dangerous, and our residents are dying. Others are being forced to deal with the carnage of witnessing these horrific events and losing loved ones. Really enough is enough. Mr Mayor, I have a motion on the Board of Head of Youth, and I'd like to move that the mayor be requested to write a letter to the Minister for Transport and Main Roads, the Honourable Mark Bailey MP, requesting that prioritisation be given to the upgrade of the intersection of Bodasit Beanley Road and Bannockburn Road and Boliva Road to include traffic signals. Please don't let this lad's death be in vain.
Thank you councillor Keransky. I need a second for the motion, councillor Murphy has seconded the motion. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? No, councillor Murphy, you would like to speak?
I'd just like to agree with councillor Keransky with regards to that intersection, it is a major problem. There's a large development on the other side and a shopping centre being built currently. It's a bit of a blind corner, there's also multiple trucks that park there at night. The community have been speaking about this for a long time, the state government really need to prioritise this corner, and I totally support my fellow councillor.
Thank you councillor Murphy, councillor Hall?
I would also like to support the motion, sorry. Sorry, I would also like to support the motion, I've also received many criticisms of this area as well.
Okay councillor Hall, any other speakers? No other speakers? Okay, thank you councillors, I now put the matter to the floor to vote, all those in favour, please raise your hand. That has been carried unanimously, therefore the motion has been carried, thank you. Councillor Raven?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I rise today to speak to the sod-turning of a development that councillor Hall and I had the pleasure of attending today. It's in the Meadowbrook, in the suburb of Meadowbrook, right in the city centre, it's the first building that will form the Meadowbrook Health Precinct, because while there is, of course, Logan Hospital there right now, you can't have a precinct with just a hospital. You need a lot more than one building and one structure, you need a lot more than one service provider, and this is the first step being taken with a $20 million investment by the Hallwell Group, who is a family-owned company that have owned land in the area for over 35 years. In fact, we listened to Ben Senior talking this morning about when he first came driving down a dirt Logan Lee Road, where there was a gate that you had to hop out of to cross the train tracks to open manually, drive through, I wondered if it was quicker for him to get from where the Logan Motorway is now down to Kingston Road on a dirt track than it is with the traffic that we have in front of the Logan Hospital today. It was fantastic to see the confidence and also the alignment of the Hallwell Group's development and investment with council's vision for the area. They specifically spoke, and the reason why I wanted to raise this in general business, about one of our staff, Jason Santar, they basically said that, Jason Orbert told them, you're crazy if you don't spend money on a medical centre here and a medical facility, you're going to invest anywhere else, you've got box in your head. And I believe that was a direct quote from Jason, and so I wanted to give him full credit, because both the Bens said they were looking at something else. They weren't going to do, they weren't going to build the first step in that medical precinct. If not for Jason's hard work and his very straight-talking, direct style of getting people to focus on the priorities for our city, we might be looking at more retail, we might be looking at residential accommodation, and that is not the vision for the area, and that's not what our community expects. So thank you, Jason, and if the CEO could please pass on my congratulations and thanks, that would be wonderful.
Thank you councillor Raven, councillor Hall?
I'd just like to second that.
Councillor Fraser?
I have none, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Hiramah?
Not at this time, Mr Mayor.
Okay, that's all GB, I've got something to say. As you're probably aware, I think it was about 10 years ago, I actually, in this actual room, I actually said the words that I believe that Facebook will be a fad, or I might have said social media. I wish I was right. And I think this week proves that, but unfortunately I was wrong, and I'm going to stand on that and say, yes, I was wrong. The problem with social media, as I said before, it allows the village idiot to have a platform to be heard in our community, and the amount of rhetoric that's going around in our community regarding anti-vaccine is disgraceful. Last Christmas, I was reading about clipper ships that sailed from Melbourne to England, or England to Australia, I should say, and this was the transportation of the immigrants from England to Australia during the 19th century. Now, during that stage, any child that got on that ship and had measles was a total disaster because not one child would get off the boat. We're talking, you know, up to 20 or so children would be buried at sea because there was no cure for measles. We have gone such a long way with science and medicine, and to hear what's out there in our community about anti-vaccine is disgraceful. Village idiots should not be heard, social media is a disgrace, and we shall allow for the general media to be heard. I just wish people would tune in to proper media and get their facts right. I will be putting my hand up for the vaccine, as soon as I'm allowed to get it, I'll be getting it, because I don't want COVID-19. And I would suggest that every resident in this city should do the same. I'll leave it with that. We now come to the end of the meeting, that concludes our agenda for today. I now declare the meeting of the ordinary council meeting closed at 11.04. Thank you very much.